Calls me in order. Councilman Scott, could you give us the indication?
Let's stand, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this time to come together as a community, Lord. We thank you for the time we prepare to serve you, Lord, in a very special way. We ask, Lord, that you give us the decisions to make this community better, Lord. We ask that you be with us during this springtime, Lord, and bless our farmers and our produce as it begins to grow, Lord, in this season of abundance in your presence. We ask to be with those family members that have lost ones since our last session, Lord. We ask all these things in Christ's name.
Amen. The face of flags. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, you see the agenda before you. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we postpone presentation number one at the request of Mrs. Johnson, who is under the weather this evening, the proclamation in memory of Norman Johnson. I'll make a motion that we postpone that until the next month's meeting.
I second that motion.
Okay. Any other changes to the agenda?
I did see one item on the consent agenda. I think that's now been fixed. When I was reviewing the contract for our interim public utilities director, it had some incorrect dates in that. Has that been?
Yeah, we correct those.
Okay, so I guess there's no need to pull that then.
All right. So with the change of removing the first presentation, I have a motion second to approve the agenda. Any comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, all motion canceled. All right. I'm gonna ask Councilman Travis Scott and Regina Sanders to come to the front. Councilman Scott, will you give the synopsis of the events? And Mrs. Sanders?
Councilman Lee, I'd like to ask you to come forward too, please. Allow me to introduce Ms. Regina Sanders here to everyone. Appreciate y'all coming to the meeting. We've got a small presentation we'd like to do real fast, just to take a few minutes of your time. On behalf of the Smithfield Town Council, Councilman Martin Lee and myself, we decided we would like to have a special presentation for the EMS emergency services and fire responders in our community for special circumstances what took place. And I prepared a statement, Ms. Sanders, I'm gonna read and I'll give you a chance to say a few things, okay? Working in an emergency service scenes have many high levels of stress factors and generally present hazardous situations where the people involved are running away. But they first, but the first responders are the ones generally going in opposite directions in effort to help others. Most of those times, those people in need are strangers. Our local public safety servants are always answering calls to help others, and many times the efforts that they do go unnoticed. On December 24th, my dear friend and faithful citizen of Smithfield was one of those in need, her and her husband. Mr. Sanders, would you please join us? One of our very active citizens, Ms. Regina and Mr. Daniel here, were the ones in need. The call came in as a cardiac arrest, a nine echo one, which to us in emergency services means a person is unresponsive, does not have a pulse, and is not breathing. As the crews arrived and began gathering immediate facts, and it was confirmed that Ms. Sanders was a victim of cardiac arrest, with the excellent care and professionalism displayed by our public safety personnel from the For Oaks EMS, Johnson County EMS, and the Smithfield Fire Department, medical responders, and even Smithfield Police Department was present. They were able to receive the revived Ms. Sanders. These men and women put in countless hours of training and have time, have efforts and teamwork like no other profession. It is very clear that it truly makes a difference. At this time, I'd like to give Ms. Sanders a second to say a few words.
Words, can I, I don't have enough words in my vocabulary to thank the EMS of Smithfield, For Oaks, and the Smithfield Fire Department and the police who was there at my house on December the 24th. My husband found me, I wasn't breathing, I had no pulse, no response whatsoever. But he called these people and he said they were there within minutes. So we really have a proud workers in Smithfield, first responders to be thankful for and be proud of because through God, they gave me a second chance at life. And a lot of people don't get that second chance, but they gave me a second chance of living, and I just thank them for it. I told my husband some time ago, I want to see each of them so I can thank them personally because God gave me a second chance, and I know he has something in store for me, and like I told my husband, I'm a willing person now for whatever he want to use me for. And like I said, I just thank you all because you were there in minutes and you brought me back to life, and I'm just so thankful. I will never forget that, never. And I'm just so proud of our citizens here in Johnson County, our first responders. Again, thank you so much.
To me, Smithfield is a wonderful place to live, and to the first responders and everything else, I love them. At times, I have to call them myself, but I just thank them for what they did at night to bring my wife back to me. I tell you what, and I am dedicated to this town to say thank you, thank you, thank you.
And I spent four days in the hospital, but after I got out of the hospital, my family decided to wait and have Christmas dinner whenever I got out of the hospital, so thank you all.
At this time, I'd like to ask all the personnel from the For Oaks EMS, Smithfield Fire Department, and Johnson County EMS, who responded to this scene, to please come forward and allow Ms. Sanders to shake your hand and say thank you. I'd also like to ask, if y'all will come forward this time, I also would like to ask our mayor to present you guys with a city pin as a token of appreciation from this board.
Just for my line right here, Mr. Sanders, do you want to just go up there? [inaudible]
Thank you very much. [inaudible]
Lord bless you, Lord bless you with you.
Yes, yes, thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
[inaudible]
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 Is this a golden opportunity to get a beautiful picture?
I'd like to make one last statement. Again, I'd like to thank everyone for coming on behalf of this board and this council. Your service goes very appreciated in this community, and we continue to look forward to supporting you guys and thank you for what you do. I also'd like to say thank you to the families of those of you that work in EMS and fire and police law enforcement because during these times, we understand that your loved ones are a way to help others, and that means a lot to us as well. Ms. Sanders, thank you for this opportunity, and we look forward to your continued service. She serves on many boards in our town, her and her husband both, and we're very appreciative of what they do for us. So thank you again. [applause]
At this time, I'm gonna ask Chief Scott to come up to the...
[inaudible]
Wow, what a great day to live in Smithfield, huh? Mr. Mayor, thanks. It's my pleasure to recognize Officer Mike Gray as receives his advanced law enforcement certificate from the North Carolina Education and Training Standards Commission. Officer Gray joins seventeen other members of the Smithfield Police Department that have earned this specific recognition. Officer Gray is a nine-year veteran for the agency. He earned the advanced certificate. Officer Gray had to complete over twelve hundred hours of continuing education unique to law enforcement. He's had past involvement with the tactical team. He's been an acting sergeant during a time when the department was short-staffed due to injuries. He's a field training officer and a senior officer on his squad. Please join me in recognizing him in this most prestigious award.
And these public hearings are about real estate and rezonings and that kind of thing. And they're a little confusing sometimes, so I'm gonna kinda walk everybody through it. But we'll open the public hearing, we're gonna listen to some information, we're gonna give a chance for people to talk about it, and then we'll close the public hearing, and the council goes in and talks about it. But before we start, has anybody here tonight planned to speak? We have two kinda planning issues. If you're planning to speak, you can stand up and all be sworn in at one time, and we can get that underway and do it.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Mayor, I make a motion, we open the public hearing.
Paul, do you want to tell us about the evidence?
This is a continuation of last month's public hearing on a conditional use permit. It's CUP 1501, and it's about a car lot on NC 210 at the intersection of Swift Creek Road. I won't go through all the details that we did to initiate the process last month because this is a continuation, but I would like to bring a few things to your attention that you asked for and some additional information that we have obtained for you as evidence. Two things that you requested to be looked into was staff to inquire as of NC DOT is what their requirements would be for a driveway permit. We have done that, and you have an attachment there that the clerk has. And it's an email from Marcus Lee, who is in charge of issuing permits for our district here, out of Goldsboro. And he also includes on that you had requested the traffic count for both NC 210 and Swift Creek Road. NC 210's traffic count, which is, I believe, right around five thousand there, that is kinda the breakpoint to where you have to have a turn lane. And in the packet, you're gonna see that there's an alternate site plan that has been submitted by the engineer for the applicant that has changed the location of the driveway permit to reflect DOT's desire of where the driveway actually should be connected, which is now off of Swift Creek Road and not off of NC 210, because if they had built it on NC 210, DOT has indicated that it probably would have required a turn lane, but on Swift Creek it does not. The site plan reflects that by orienting the display area for the vehicles that are forty-five degree angle across the, between the two roads, which puts it not facing directly into the property on the other side of the road. Now, that's one piece of information, is the DOT. You also ask about property values, and the engineer and the applicant have this, have with them an appraiser that might be able to address some of those questions for you a little later on in your question and answer period. The other question that we've gotten is, what are some of the uses that are allowed in a B3 zoning district? Because keep in mind, this is a conditional use. Now, it requires council approval. There are a number of uses in a B3 zoning district which do not require the council's approval, and I just wanted to accentuate a few of those. These would be approved by staff. If the applicant came in with one of these, we would not submit it to council for approval, and it would be approved administratively. But these would include automobile parts and supplies, stores, automobile service stations, contractor's office, convenience stores, drugstores, barber shops, car washes, retail establishments, engineering and surveying offices, financial institutions, in other words, banks and savings and loan, floral shops, food stores, furniture stores, gas pumping stations, health clubs, laundry and dry cleaning establishments, locksmiths, minor shopping centers, movie theaters, offices, pawn shops, restaurants, and retail business, and upholstery shops, and a post office. So any of those applications could be made for this property, and those would be staff-approved. Everything else that would be applied for in the UDO, there is a table of uses which require a conditional use permit, which would mean that the council would have to grant permission as this is being asked for tonight. So with that being said, I stand open for any questions that you might have, but we, in the continuation of the hearing, you're asked to take into consideration the conditional use permit request based on the new revised site plan, which let me just show you the difference. This is the site plan that was submitted for the planning board, as well as what was submitted to you last time. This is the new site plan. You'll notice that parking is aligned with about a forty-five degree angle. This is NC 210. This is Swift Creek Road. Again, up here, 210 and Swift Creek Road. This one was parallel to 210. This one is a forty-five degree angle. So that's the end of my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to ask them. The engineer is here. If you have any questions directly of him also.
Paul, I just have a general question. With the permitted uses, the council really has no say-so. We cannot put conditions on permitted uses, but with a conditional use, we can put conditions. Let me give you an example. Under permitted use, you set a retail store, or a service station, or a convenience store. Who regulates those hours?
There is no regulatory condition. As long as it meets the noise ordinance, that they can stay open twenty-four seven.
With a conditional use permit, the council, if we deemed it appropriate as a condition, we could regulate hours.
That is correct.
And we could expand buffers, things like that.
Yes.
So the council has more leeway in a conditional use than it would be a permitted.
Thus the name, conditional use. The council can conditionalize the requirements for the permit.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Paul? All right, at this time, does the applicant or their engineer have any information y'all wanna present, any additional information?
Let me first off apologize. I do not know who will operate this car lot. I talked with the owner, and he said the person he had been talking to withdrew that. He is looking to lease it out, but I cannot tell you who will operate. What I can tell you is, we have tried everything we know possible to accommodate and make this as least impact to the neighborhood as we can. Reorient the center or the car lot like we've done it. Trying to put it so it's not facing the gentleman across the street. Putting it where the back is to the guy beside us. We've put the fence in, doing the landscaping. We've done what we feel like is necessary or as much as we can to accommodate the neighborhood. I have with me tonight, Mr. Randy White, who is a longtime real estate individual, and I'd like Randy to come up and address the idea of this thing impacting the value of the joint and property. Randy?
I've been asked to speak to comment on how this may affect property values around there. I know there's some homes that are really near this property. In my opinion, that going there is not gonna hurt the value. The unknown, of not knowing what can go there, may affect you being able, your ability to sell your home. With all the things that can be approved without having to go to the council, and your ability to put limitations on the hours of operation, I think just a vacant lot on that corner right now, not knowing what somebody could do, is really gonna affect the property values more than knowing and seeing what's gonna be there. I think the way the landscaping around it's done, to protect the property around it, to make it look nice, it doesn't block the corner view. In my opinion, I think that getting that little unknown out of the equation will help property values more than hurt. Because if I'm trying to sell a house next door, near there, and I've got this lot, people are gonna be asking me, what can go there? And when I go through that list of all the potential businesses that could go there, it's more likely to scare somebody away than actually be able to see what's there. And so, in my opinion, in my professional opinion, I don't really see how that's gonna hurt the property value any more than the unknown that could go there, like a car wash that's open twenty-four hours a day, where people washing their cars and playing their music. So I think limitations on the hours is good, and that will actually help your property value more so than what's there now. Thank you.
Let me ask you a question.
Okay.
In terms of hours, limiting hours, what do you see, in your professional opinion, would affect values? Nine o'clock, ten o'clock, six o'clock? What? And that's a general question, but obviously twenty-four hours is not gonna help.
Yeah, obviously, if something can be there twenty-four hours a day, like a car wash, and people can go wash their cars anytime, that's not good, but I mean, anytime before, anytime closer between eight, nine, ten, well, ten o'clock's probably too late. I would say eight or nine o'clock would be reasonable, this time of year, especially when it stays light later. But I think eight or nine o'clock would be reasonable as far as the hours of operation there. I don't think they won't stay open that long if it's a car lot. I don't think, I mean, they might want to stay open a little bit later for people to get off work, but I think eight or nine o'clock's reasonable to not affect the property values. I think people being concerned, potential people looking at a home over there is gonna be concerned of somebody being over there at eleven or twelve o'clock at night and just not knowing what's going on. That's gonna scare them more than the unknown.
That's not gonna happen because it's conditional permit use, so we would never allow, we would restrict them hours anyway.
Right, what I'm saying...
So you can take that equation out.
No, but I can. Let me explain what I mean. There's so many businesses that can go there without coming to get a conditional permit that could open, could stay open twenty-four hours if they wanted to, that you can't, that you have no say-so.
[inaudible]
So that is my whole point, is the unknowns of what could go there on that corner with somebody looking to buy a home there would scare them away possibly because they don't know what's gonna go there and how long they're gonna stay open. The fact that you have the ability to limit it, I think is a plus. So that's where I was going with that.
Okay, I understand.
Okay.
In your professional opinion or your past experiences, how many times have you seen this happen basically in the middle of a residential area? Because you just said you would think it would devalue the homes, in your opinion. How'd you base that upon?
I'm basing it on if I...
I understand, let me say, I understand we're saying it could be there, but have you seen something like this before in your past experience?
I don't really, I can't think of a particular answer to this right this second, but I know that people want to know what could possibly go next door to them, and that part of the equation is what I'm addressing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions for the...
Mayor, I have a question for Mr. Simmons. Based on the testimony we heard at the last meeting, it was obvious that the homeowners of residential area were concerned with the traffic going out on NC 210. I see your new site plan, and in fact, it's got the traffic going out on Swift Creek Road. Is that how you plan to keep it established?
Yes. Yes, we can't put a driveway on 210 without going back to DOT for a permit. Right now, and I sit down with the owner and I explain the concerns of the neighbors for 210, I explained to him that the potential for putting in a, extending the existing turn lane on there. We looked at it, and he said, I have no problem switching that to the driveway on Swift Creek Road. And I said, well, I would like to, if we do that, to reorient this property. Number one, put it closer to the driveway, and number two, orient it so it's not looking directly across the street at the gentleman that lives over there.
And Dan, the driveway as it's now proposed is on Swift Creek Road is more towards the back of the lot, if you will, on that side, not closer to the intersection.
Right, and I work with DOT because DOT's gonna want me to get it just as far away from that intersection as they can.
And I agree.
We need to shift it, move it farther away, we'll do what DOT wants us to do.
But it could be even further than actually what's shown on this map.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Definitely would like to see that happen, and I'm sure that's what you guys will work on, DOT.
And Mr. Simmons, I know you can't answer this question, but you know, we as a council spend so much time doing conditional use permits, it never happens. And I know that's without your control, but you know, this is the second meeting we've addressed this, and we asked for additional information, and appreciate getting it. But the reality is, is whatever we do tonight could change tomorrow anyway. The owner could just say, I'm gonna bring in a car wash, or I'm gonna bring in a convenience store. So I mean, I say that not to diminish what we do, because what we do is very important, but I wish there was some way that we knew all the time we spent was gonna be fruitful.
All I can tell you is, when I spoke with the owner about this, and he told me, he says, I've never operated a car, a used car lot, and he said, but if I can't get anybody else to, I'll do it myself. And he has run some very nice places of business in the past, and I have no doubt that this would be...
But also, to Mr. Ashley's point, if we were to place restrictions or any other, ask for any additional things to be added as part of the conditional use, we may not know who's doing it, but as long as it's under this application, those restrictions will apply and do run with the land. Is that correct?
As long as the use is the same.
As long as the use is the same.
Right.
Mr. Simmons, so that's clear, is that if they go with another use, that's a permitted use, a convenience store, they can then change the site plan or not based with standing conditional use with landscaping, something along these lines. If they change their mind completely and say, I wanna have a convenience store, they can do that as a matter of right and change the site plan without being held to this one. and change the site plan without being held to this one.
That's correct. This is what is called the entitlement of the land. It doesn't mean they have to build the car lot. It just means they can be entitled to build the car lot. They still complain to council for this.
Any other questions for Mr. Simmons? All right, thank you, Dan. At this time, is there anybody in the public audience who'd like to speak on this issue? Step forward. You'll state your name.
I'm Mike Capirelli. I'm adjacent to the property, the car lot on the left side. I built my house. Took me three years to build it. And the town has a praise for over $400,000 now. You can't tell me that things will be worked at with a used car at the rental store. It makes no sense. It's definitely going to take the value away from my house. And it's still looking out my kitchen window. You've still got to see it. And when they did this to make a conversion, I never even got the letter until after the meeting was three years ago, two years ago. I was living in New York, so I should have got a certified letter saying this was the date they were having it. And I never got that, so I couldn't have been to that meeting. But I definitely think it's the wrong spot for having a car dealership all the way out there, which you got three right down the road. I mean, we're going to put one over street in my house. It means I can put one in my property then, turn it to commercial, and put a used car lot dealership there. I mean, it's just not the right area for it. Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else in the public who'd like to speak?
Hi, my name is Kathleen Capirelli, and I am the wife of Michael right next door. I love the thing about Ms. Sanders, and I like Smithfield, and I appreciate that you're all listening to us all this time. And I look out my kitchen window, moving from New York in this beautiful area, and now I feel I'm going to see a car dealership. They have been trying to work with us, but I really don't feel it's the right place for one. It's kind of a quiet area. It is a very busy street, and it's not very appealing anymore when there's going to be a car dealership there. Thank you.
My name is Esther Watson. It's my husband Frank, and we live across the street where this car lot is going to go. I've heard a lot of discussion about anything can go there. I personally don't understand why anybody in their right mind would want to put a business on that corner. So I'm not sure a business would succeed, regardless as to what you put there. It should not be a destination for anyone. It is a way to get to where you're going unless you live there. I take exception to the premise that it won't impact our home value. I think it will. And again, you're impacting the quality of our life. We moved to Smithfield because it was quiet. We moved to the country because it was quiet. Businesses, when I need to go to a business, I go downtown Smithfield. I don't go to businesses out in the country. I don't find businesses out in the country. When we moved there, the residence on the corner of Swift Creek and 210 was a, is a residential area. When we moved there, there was a family living there. We found out in the first hearing that it was zoned, I think, business. We didn't know that. Apparently, there was a store there years and years and years ago that was then converted to a home, and as somebody has occupied it ever since. Again, we live in the county. This is a Smithfield decision. I can't vote for anybody on this august panel, but you can make decisions that affect the quality of my life. Thank you.
My name is Franklin Watson, and I live at 2267 NC Highway 210, directly across the street from this proposed car lot. I can't for the life of me imagine that one person in this room, not one person on this council, would buy my house after this car lot is there. That's... My neighbor said in the meeting, I think the last meeting here, if he had known that there was going to be a business zoning, he never would have bought there. I would not buy my house, now, if I had known 10 years ago when I bought the property, that it would be zoned for business. I respectfully ask this board to deny that description.
Anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak? At this time, is there any more questions from the council? All right, I'm going to entertain it. I'm asking for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second, I got a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. We've closed the public session. Now we're going to the council's side. Is there any other discussion by council or questions to staff from the council? Any of y'all? All right, you'll turn to page 23 in your agenda package. And just for the audience, we're going to go through a series of questions we have to ask. If it fails any one of these questions, then it fails altogether. And since this has been a sensitive issue, I'm going to go through each one by themselves. Based on the evidence presented to the finding the town council and applicant, if approved, this will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to the plans that's submitted and approved or is approved with the following stated conditions. The conditions are, the proposed automobile sales lot in this location will not endanger the public because the site has adequate parking and allows the site facilities facilitate safe movement of automobiles and pedestrian traffic with little or additional congestion. Do you approve or deny those facts?
I move we approve finding of fact. Number one.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Number two. The proposed automobile sales lot in this location confirms through the standards and practice of sound land use planning in the town of Smithfield, unified development ordinance provided the applicant submits a detailed site plan for planning staff to approve that shows required landscaping, lighting, paved parking, and utility connections prior to the site approval, plan approval, and valid zoning permits for an automobile sales lot. Does this meet all those requirements?
I'll make a motion that we approve finding of fact, number two.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed. Are you opposing it? Is that, Marla? Well, that's an opposition or you're for it?
Opposing it.
Okay, opposing, aye. Okay. Fact number three. Based on the evidence and testimony presented, this will not substantially injure the value of the adjoining and abutting property. And I'm going to read the description here. The proposed automobile sales lot in this location will not substantially injure the value of the adjoining or abutting properties. It will not be detrimental to the use or development of adjacent properties or other neighborhood uses provided required. Landscape buffers, street yards are installed and maintenance according with the minimum development standards that no more than 30 automobile sales for sales are on lot at any given time. Automobiles for sale should be no less than 50 feet from the right of way of NC Highway 210 and Swift Creek Road. In accordance with the town of Smithfield's Unified Development Ordinance, all parking areas shall be paved or the applicant shall request a variance by the town of Smithfield's Board of Adjustment. Do you believe this will not substantially injure the value of the adjoining and abutting properties? That's the question for this.
So, Mr. Mayor, I do have concern over the potential hours of operation. And which suggests that, if we move forward on this, that condition be placed on the hours of operation.
Paul, can we add on hours and changes, that kind of thing at this time?
Is it better to go through now and wait?
If it's approved, we do that.
If it's approved, then we can do that.
I think if you, if that's a condition you'd want, you could, the motion should reflect that you would like to add a condition about limited operating hours. You could be specific, and then at the end, you reaffirm that, and you could be more specific. But you could say, "Close by 9 o'clock or 8 o'clock, whatever time you have in mind." And at the end, you should also just probably specify that condition so it's clear.
So I'll make a motion that we approve finding of fact, number three, based on the condition that we limit the hours of operation to Monday through Saturday. No hours of operation past 8 o'clock. And on Sundays, past 6 o'clock.
Saturday, or she said Monday through Saturday?
Monday through Saturday. No hours of operation past 8:00 PM.
And on Sundays, none after 6:00. All right, I've got a motion with those times added to this one. Do I have a second on that?
Well, I mean, I'd like to, if we're going... We don't know if we're going to get to that point, but I would certainly, there are other conditions I would like to add. But another condition, if Mayor Pro Tim Moore would allow me, is if we get past this, I would want that buffer on the left side from here doubled. I would want the back buffer and the left buffer.
This is the landscaping buffer?
That's correct. It appears, and I can't tell from the map.
How deep is that buffer? How many feet is it?
It's a 40-foot type A landscape buffer, which is fairly dense buffer. But if you will refer back to your packet that was forwarded to you by Frank Moore, they recommend an actual, and they put vinyl fence to go on that pocket line in addition to the landscape buffer.
Okay. And that fence will be on the outside of the landscape buffer? Or I guess the outside?
Yeah. And the applicant has agreed to put up that fence. I think it's part of the plan.
Does that address your concerns, councilman?
It does.
Can you lower that buffer to 20 feet? I thought it was 40 feet. The buffer can be reduced by, the width of the buffer can be reduced by 50% if there's an eight-foot fence in the landscaping and stuff. But you can conditionalize. And that's what the ordinance says. If the council wants to maintain the 40-foot buffer plus the fence, that's your purpose.
So can you restate that again, Mr. Mayor? I'm sorry. So we're clear on what was just stated?
The ordinance as written states that if an eight-foot solid opaque fence is constructed, the buffer can be reduced by 50%. In our ordinance, the buffer refers not to vegetated plants, but to distance. So the distance of the buffer is 40 feet that basically nothing can be in. There will be, except landscaping. Our ordinance speaks to landscaping as transition yard. So the transition yard exists whether there's a buffer or not. Then the buffer is an additional distance that things have to sit away from the property line before you can construct anything, so...
Well, I think if we're going to get there, I would like to see the fence plus no structures, no cars, or nothing within 40 feet of the fence.
Well, if you state the 40-foot buff, type A buffer be maintained, and the transition yard landscaping maintained, and the fence, then as it comes through the permitting process, we'll make sure that that's all in there.
What he said.
The type, the type A buffer? Is that a vegetated plant buffer?
It's a buffer of distance.
Mr. Ashley, I'll entertain that amendment to my motion, but I'm not sure I can repeat it.
All right. Well, I'm going to try and make sure we can all understand it, so I'm going to walk this over. You've got a 40-foot land buffer. You've got an eight-foot, I mean, a six-foot tall fence that's solid.
Eight foot.
Eight foot. And what was the other condition?
The other is that the transition yard landscaping would be, has to be within the 40-foot buffer. Normally, the transition yard landscaping by ordinance is within the first eight feet of the buffer from the property line. But we do allow discretion in that, but that's the way the ordinance is written.
All right, I've got a minute of motion by Mr. Moore.
Second.
We've got a second on it. We have some discussion now. Any discussion? Anybody want to add something else or take away or talk about it?
I do want to say this. You know, in some respects, our hands are tied. We can control this property in a conditional use. We have no control. We have no control over buffers. We have no control over hours of use if this owner changes his mind and wants to put a 24-hour convenience store. And I really think something like that has a more substantial impact on values than a car lot that is, because of this council's requirements, landscaping and buffers and hours of use has a much lesser impact than other uses would. And bear in mind, what we can do can be changed anyway because owner can change his mind tomorrow and say, "Hmm, I want to put a car wash in a convenience store. It's going to open 24 hours a day, seven days a week." And we have no say so.
All right. Anybody else want to say that? Okay, well, I'm going to call for a vote on the motion as is. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.[1613.02] Just rate, I want to show hands. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed. And we've got a tie. That means I get to vote. I vote for the probe side, with the exceptions, I'm okay with them. But that motion carries. All right, last finding of fact. This was about that it would not affect the, not affect the adopted plans and policies of the town of Smithfield, and I'll read it. The proposed automobile sales lot at this location will not adversely affect the adopted plans and policies of the town of Smithfield, or violate the character of existing standards for development, providing all the minimum development standards are met to include landscaping, lighting, paid parking, and all the minimum development standards.
I move we approve number four.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let's see, show of hands, make sure we all got this right. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? And since we're missing a council person, normally the mayor doesn't vote, I'm going to vote, I'm going to vote for it. I believe that's the. Based on these findings of facts, we need a motion to approve based on the sag factor compliance with the above four stated findings and the full contingency upon acceptance compliance of all conditions as previously noted where if in, and with the full incorporation of all the statements we've added and agreements entered into the record by the testament of the applicant and applicant's representative. I'm looking for a motion to approve this.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit with the conditional uses that were previously stated pertaining to the restrictions to the hours of operation, the buffer requirements, and the installation of the fence.
Do I have a second?
Well, I guess we've got to have a second before we can discuss.
Yes, sir.
I'll second.
All right, now the discussion.
I would like to eliminate all Sunday hours. I mean, I don't really know many car lots that are open on Sundays anyway.
Fine.
So hours, just six days a week.
I can, I will amend that motion to restrict the days of operation Monday through Saturday to two hours, not later than eight o'clock.
Yeah, eight PM.
Eight PM. Is that sufficient?
Sounds good, thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed?
No.
Motion. I did.
Well, you've got to vote now, it's a tie.
Okay.
The mayor breaks the tie.
I'll vote to break the tie, I'll vote for it. All right, motion carries. Do I need to do this one right here? Read this out and vote on this? Or we not just do that?
That way, if that's the final.
All right. That set of motions is over, and we're now going to go to the next public hearing. I am just, as soon as all this goes over. At this time, I'm looking for a motion to open the public hearing for a new, for a new plan. Oh, we've already closed it?
Yeah. Okay. I'll make a motion that we open the public hearing.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. This is about Larry Denny. And all who tell us about it.
Let me reference you to the project, rezoning location. This is NC Highway 210. This is Skyland Drive. This is Johnson Automotive and Tire Department. And this is what used to be the Elroy F. property. And this is the backside of the Kinnerland Company's property over here. You rezoned a piece of property, the council rezoned a piece of property about two years ago. This location right here to the exact same zoning that's requested tonight, B3.
The project name for this is Glen Lake Two. It is, the applicant is Penco Land Company, and the owners are the Denny family, Denny Family Trust. It's located on the south side of NC 210, approximately twelve hundred feet west of its intersection with Skyland Drive. The applicant is requesting a rezoning, approximately nine point five one acres of land from R28 Residential Agricultural to B3 Business Zoning District. The proposed uses for this development area, that all uses permitted within the B3 zoning district may be considered for future site plan approval. This would include permitted uses by right, as well as conditional use approved by the town council. The southernmost portion of the property contains environmentally sensitive areas to include wetlands, floodplain, and a small lake. Any future development proposal will be encouraged to limit encroachment into these areas, and will be required to document repair in buffers, provide stormwater facilities, and elevate structures if they are located within the hundred-year floodplain. The property to the north is zoned R8 and R28. Is it currently, is existing use is currently vacant agricultural land. To the south, the zoning is R28. The current existing use is vacant, vacant land, which is wetlands. To the east, the zoning is currently B3. The existing use is vacant agricultural. To the west, the zoning is R28, and the existing use is single-family dwelling. The property considered for rezoning contain, contains, the property considered for rezoning contains uses for agricultural endeavors. Rezoning the property to B3 business will allow for all pertinent permitted uses within the B3 business zoning district to be considered for future approval, including multifamily housing complexes, retail strip centers, and convenience stores. The proposed rezoning to B3 is consistent with the strategic growth plan of the town of Smithfield, which recommends the property to be zoned for high-density residential development and office and institutional uses. B3 is a zoning district which allows that to occur. Also, the other would be office and institutional. Consistency with the Unified Development Code, the rezoning will be consistent with the code, provided that all proposed future land uses constructed the minimum required parking and meet ADA accessibility standards. Any use requiring outdoor storage will require conditional use permit approved by the town council. The property considered for rezoning is located on a minor corridor entering into the town from the west, and is in close proximity to other like zoning districts. Rezoning this property from residential to commercial district will not create any compatibility issues with the adjacent commercial uses. Fire protection will be by the town of Smithfield. The rezoning will not in itself affect schools. The use that would go on the property could potentially be that in the future. Parks and recreation is the same. The rezoning itself would not affect park and recreation planning, but could in the future, depending on what's developed on it, affect that. Streets and access, approximately six hundred and thirty feet of road frontage exist along NC 210, and NC DOT would be the permitting entity for water and sewer, I mean, for roadway connection. Water and sewer provider will be the town of Smithfield, and the electrical provider will be Duke Energy. In connection with a legislative decision for rezoning request, the town council may consider certain approved criteria. Please refer to the attached approved criteria, which the planning staff generally accepts these findings as fact as part of the complete application submitted by the petitioner. The planning department's recommendation, we recommend to staff the approval of the rezoning of the land to, from R28 to B3. The planning board recommendation from its March 5, 2015 meeting, was to unanimously vote to recommend approval of the request of the acreage from R28 to B3 district, B3 zoning district. The town council has now requested to review the petition and make a decision in accordance with the approved criteria for the rezoning of approximately nine point five one acres of land located on the south side of NC 210, from the R28 zoning district to the B3 zoning district. In your packet, starting on page sixty-nine, you have about eight items there that are the approval criteria for the rezoning. I will remind you that unlike the conditional use permit, this is a legislative decision by the, by the council will rezone, and is, is not a judicial situation. So with that, staff completes its presentation and stands open for questions.
Paul, a notice in the rezoning application, it says proposed use multifamily, fifty-six units. This rezoning, we rezon it, we're not, it's not limited to that. It can be used for anything in the B3 district. Is that correct?
That's correct. The rezoning itself is to stand on its own. If it does go to multifamily, the developer would have to come back for a conditional use permit from council.
So this is probably a question for Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, do you have the names of the two people that spoke in opposition of the previous case that was before us?
Mr. Caprielli and his wife, and Mr. Mrs. Watson.
That's correct. That's what I remembered. So with that being said, this, this also, they live along 210, and they previously stated that they did not receive notices about the previous case, did not receive notices about that property being rezoned to B3. However, in our packet, we do have a listing that states that they were notified about this rezoning, and I do not see them present now to speak about this. But it is accurate to state that they, they were mailed by first class, United States mail, first-class mail?
Yes.
Okay. And there is no requirement for certified mail, is that correct?
That is correct.
We need the requirements by first-class mail.
We just have to send it first-class mail, and the clerk that mails it signs an affidavit to the fact that it was mailed.
Their names are listed here as being sent a letter. Just for the record, their names are listed here, and property addresses are listed here as, as being sent notice about this rezoning request.
What page are you on, Councilman Moore?
I'm on page sixty. The adjacent property owners is on page forty-one.
Might I mention, might I mention to you that any mailings are to the tax, where the tax statement is mailed to, and not to the, and not to the fiscal address of the property unless they're the same.
All right.
Is there any questions to Paul about the, the, the Denny property we're talking about right now? Are you finished with Paul?
No, no, I'm going to have to rescind that statement, because I was just pointed out that they were not sent notices according to this. Is that correct?
Yeah, they're not adjacent property.
Because they're not adjacent property owners. Okay, all right, but they do live along 210, but they're not considered.
That's right.
The requirement is only for adjacent property owners. Is that correct?
The general statutes indicates adjacent property owners, we generally are a little more liberal than that, and send it in the immediate area, but definitely make sure we send it to all the adjacent property owners.
Okay, all right. Sorry, my apologies.
Is there any questions for Paul? At this time, is there anybody from the audience who'd like to get up and speak about this property? All right. Is there any questions from the council for anybody on this? Okay, well, I'm going to entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, at this time, the public hearing is closed. Is there any discussion by the council, or do y'all want to question the staff any? About any of these items on this one? Okay.
Paul, this is, this is outside the city limits.
No, sir, our city limits goes all the way to Swift Creek.
Okay, all right.
This, this one has a finding of fact of eight different facts. I assume you all have kind of looked this over. Does anybody want to try to make a motion to approve them all at one time? Call for a vote, or do you want to go through each item separately?
I move to approve all eight findings of fact. They're stated and listed.
Second.
And we'll have some discussion. If any of y'all uncomfortable this, I'll go through all eight of them if you want me to. I've got a motion and a second to approve all simultaneously. No discussion, I'm going to call for a vote. All in favor of approving this, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And motion carries. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Yes, you need the actual approval. Just a state, a straight motion.
And can I get a straight motion to approve this, as is?
Yes, sir. I'll make a motion that we approve the rezoning request as stated.
All right. Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as listed. Same move, I meant second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Now let's move to, oh, public. All right, at this, at this time, we have a public comment section. Is there anybody, citizen who'd like to speak to any items from the council, anything that's on their mind? You come up, or you can stay where you are, but it'd be easier to hear us if you come up.
Yes, first I'd like to say good afternoon. My name is Rochester Ellis, from the west side of Smithfield, North Carolina, behind Barbara Court. And we're here for asking if we could have help pertaining to a road to property that we are now staying. Been staying there for a while. I was told that it's been on the table for a while, for about twenty years. What it is, is right behind Barbara Court, it's a residence back there, and we need help to get a road in and out. We are blessed to have the trash trucks to come in and out, but that's been part of the problem. It's leaving ruts and deep holes there, and also elderly people are back there. And we have been financing this thing ourselves. And the reason I say it's been twenty years, because I have a list of people that were there before, that used to come in and sit in on meetings twenty years ago, and it was three of them, and they're all deceased. And it's happened some changes, but the road itself, they haven't been. We're standing before them, this is my brother-in-law, he's also standing with me, and we're asking that if possible, that someone could aid us in this. I had talked with Lenny Branch, I think he's over that side of the area of Smithfield, and he's had assured me that it, last time I talked to him was about four, five months ago, and he said that it was on the table, it was on the books. But what we want to do, we want to move from the table to the plate, meaning that we need some help, we really do.
And what is the address of this, of your?
It's 615 Barbara Road, right behind Barbara Court. Also, with that said, I'm sorry. Yeah, also with that said, Barbara Court itself, we've noticed that there's standing water there as well, behind the facility. So, you know, I don't know if anyone probably hadn't been brought to their attention of that, because, you know, we've had a rainy season. But along with that, and the ruts that the trucks make in and out, you know, we need someone to look at that, and hopefully get it paid, or assist us in trying to do something to maintain the in and out process. Just like I was hearing of the EMS workers as of tonight, actually, if something were to happen back there, it would be very devastating for them to even get in and out. I myself am disabled, and along with, we got a couple of elderly people back there. And so my thing is, is that if you would look at this, and see if we can be assisted by you guys to help us with something. I also heard that one time that it's supposed to have been in the program to have put a road or something in that facility. On that part, I don't know how far that's went, or what the deal is, but what I do is at hand now is that we need some assistance from town council. We all vote, and you know we pay the taxes. I don't know what kind of effect that have on you making decisions, but when I look at my ballot, and I see certain names, and I've been in here on occasions, and I've seen how you guys work, you do fairly well. So now, I'm asking if you guys would help us with this project. It's been land dormant a long time, twenty years. As I look over other parts of Smithfield, I've seen how things have changed. So we need a change on that side. So here we are, me and my brother-in-law. And we have names of people previously. It's not the first time, but this is really the first time we have addressed it to you guys in a while. So whatever you can do, we need help, that's the bottom line. We really do.
Well, I think every citizen should, should hold their city council accountable for everything. That's, that's why we're all up here.
Right.
Just quick questions. I'm not familiar with this site. Just quick questions, I'm not familiar with this site, Lenny, do you know?
Uh, this is a property matter, it's not the family, they, they, uh, this property owner. They have petitioned the council, and stipulations were put in, they were asked to bring it back. Uh, I think rather than fall free from, maybe forty foot of the roadway area, and then calling the route and getting it up to council standards, and then bringing it back to council and ask council to, uh, guide the road as a family, and that was, that was, that was the guy.
Are there houses up and down, is, is it laid out as a forty-foot wide road?
No, it is not.
Other, other, the house layout like a subdivision where they're facing onto the e- evenly to?
Are you talking the entire length of the road?
I'm sorry?
The entire length of the road?
Well, the stimulation, the way it's written up, is set up for that. You know, for the stimulation that you guys need for it to be, because we had to go and then get the right of way and all that, had everyone to sign the petition for all of that, but the actually doing of that had never been done. That's why it's actually now it's just a path, but prior to that, it's set up for that, but we've just been maintaining it as a path because we can't do anything else but that.
Are, are you the landowner?
Yes, I am back there. Me alone, my brother-in-law, then I got a, uh, sister-in-law that's back there, which is elderly, and just like before then, like I said, a gentleman named George Washington used to be back there, he's passed. He had came here many a times, he's been gone now for years, also Lester Barber, Rufus.
I'm talking about the actual road part you want us to improve. Do you know who owns that?
Yeah.
Pete, you know about this? Let's hear about it.
There's, uh, I remember when we looked into it before, they just ran, with the stipulations they did, uh, bring it up to a given designation, this was a roadway, of what you, you look at the maps, the property maps, tax maps, they're all located by the way, lots of money each other, they just, there's houses back in it that they shouldn't have approved, and they're, in the diagram, just like a large form of like a roadway putting it, the diagram appears to be in the family members over a period of time.
Yeah.
Fifty or sixty years probably, just guessing.
Yep.
But, uh, there's no, been no dedication, no dedication roadway or even, I mean, it was in the family, so it just ran the, you know, driveway back from, from where it's there. So, uh, it's, it's, it's perfect out, dedicated roadway, brought up the stand in the town, taken over, and that's the stipulation we look in written form to approve. Says about twenty years ago, not, well, fifteen, I don't remember, early two thousand.
But, but, but at that time, the idea was that, that the land needed to be deeded back to the town.
It had to, it had to be some dedication of, 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 uh, forty foot, fifty foot roadway.
Just a roadway or the actual ownership of the property?
The actual ownership.
To the town. Are, are you guys familiar with this, with this, with this action a couple of years ago?
Yeah, well, everybody agreed, you know, they, uh, owned property back there for, for the, uh, I think they said wanted, uh, fifteen feet from the center of the road that was already there, and everybody, we signed a stipend, everybody agreed to do that, so they would build, they would build a road, then laid on it, said that they didn't have the money. So, I don't know what the deal is now.
But the town didn't have the money, or the, or the people with the, the land didn't have the money? I, 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 I can't speak for the council, but I think if you're, yes, sir?
More recently, I can speak to it, we did permit a house down there, despite that they got an access easement that allowed the house to live in there, our code speaks to the fact that any lot has to have an easement or a roadway to a dedicated public road. And another way to do that, we did record a map about a year or so ago, maybe even two, I can't remember, for an access easement for one lot back there, and they got all the property owners, it took
Yeah.
It took the gentleman several years to get everybody to sign on, but it was not dedicated to the town. It was just the individual property owners giving that person a lot of access to their property, across their property. There's been no dedication or liability, so it's just business access to that property.
I think if you can get all the property owners to give us a forty-foot wide road, do they have to bring it up to standards before we take it over?
Well, may I suggest that perhaps the mayor, you and Paul and Lenny meet with these two gentlemen and, and within the next couple of weeks and report back to us in our work session where we're headed?
Yes, sir, I mean, I think
Is that, is that, that way we can put the timeframe on this one?
Yes, sir, and I'd love to go out there and take a look at, but I'm pretty sure, at the end of the day, it's gonna be, as Lenny said, I mean, one, we won't take a road, even if it were partially paved, that was a private road, unless it's property standards, that's our policy, you know, as written. In this case, you have basically a privately developed area with kind of put-together easements to access the property. The roads are never paved, I doubt it was even plotted to start with, and, you know, it's left in, you know, basically just a private drive, I mean, there's no requirement that the town pave those kinda roads, there's no requirement, and we didn't create that situation, it was good enough back then without it being paved, and now we're being asked to pave something that we did not create. The answer to this, and it's not the only time, it's happened in other communities, it's not a one-time thing here at all, but typically what you'll do is either, um, as Mr. Branch suggested, the property owners will get together and bring up the standard to pave the road, and then dedicate the road in a condition that's acceptable, or even, um, the, the town has the right to basically, if the property owners want to do, and they petition, request it, the right to, um, um, charge, uh, the road foot by foot to the property owners, which is divided up on a per foot basis for the cost of the paving of that road would be, you know, the base, the pavement, the whole, the whole project, um, charged that and collected over four or five years, that way there's a way, compared to the water improvements back to some of the streets, uh, years ago, it'd be similar to that. So, basically, it's kind of like, okay, well, everybody understands and, you know, everybody wants to do it, but, you know, the question would be, you know, really, you know, is it the right thing to do to have the rest of the town pay for a road that was not built, you know, as a subdivision development? Or is everybody else, you know, paid when they bought their houses or property or apartments or whatever? They bought, and part of the price was to pay for a paved road that was already there in existence. So, I mean, that, that's where you, you come to, I mean, I'll, I'll be happy to look into that, it's no problem, but I'm pretty sure that will be a policy decision, certainly the council has the ability to say, yes, we'll pave it, we'll just accept it and get it, get that right, but...
Well, and my only concern is that, well, whatever that answer is, it's been twenty years. We just need to do our due diligence, document whatever the position is, make sure these gentlemen in that neighborhood is informed of the process, that, that's really what I'm concerned about, is we have a process where the citizens will be informed, they don't have to accept
Right.
what the answer is, but I think we have to have a process of informing the citizens so everybody knows.
You know, this, this is gonna result in, just like Paul says, ultimately, these gentlemen are gonna have to hire an engineer and a surveyor to design a road and to hit the property boundary, and then you've got dedication and, um, probably, as you're familiar with Emory, some title search, um, but it's gonna start with a surveyor, and after that, there is, as Paul said, the ability to put in curb and gutter and tree assessments, and on occasion, the town has matched some of those funding. But it's gonna have to start with a planner, that's a surveyor and engineer, to design that possible road, and I'm sure the manager can do that, but the town doesn't usually provide that, so there are very competent engineers or surveyors around here.
Let's, let's do it, let's do this, I think councilman Emory's right, let's let you guys meet with the town, city manager and, and town planner, all at one time, and then kinda, and who, Pete, since you've kinda started with some of this or had experience in the past, you could be there too, and everybody get in one room and see, see what you can hammer out. And let's do that, and that, we'll, we'll stop right here, cause that's probably what we need to get more information. Paul, you can manage that.
Maybe Pete can be with part of that meeting too.
Probably some calls on the, uh, where we kinda laid out.
Yeah.
Alright, gentlemen, anything else?
I appreciate that, on that note, I know we're finished with it, but, uh, for the future that you guys may have, uh, going on in that arena, uh, we would also, you know, that may, can be looked at as well, and I know that side of town, uh, along with others, is improving, so with that said, I, I hope that we, you know, keep open mind with that as well, cause I've seen how, you know, everyone has done a great thing with the growing of Smithfield on that side over there, I feel like eventually, there'll probably be some more growth on that side as well, so, you know, if you would, keep that in mind as well, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? Alright, let's go to the business items number one. Paul Sabas.
Mayor, on page, uh, one sixty-five of your packet, I've got some backup material, and tonight, this is dealing with a proposed contribution, again, from Mr. James P. George. As you know, Mr. George has a, uh, a trust set up where, um, he helps to fund the Appearance Committee activities, and, uh, that was set up, uh, many years ago. He would like to increase, not increase, but make a separate contribution of twenty-five thousand dollars through his and his family's generosity, which is very appreciative, again, to go toward Appearance, um, Appearance efforts in the town of Smithfield. Um, he wants it to be separate from the, uh, the existing trust, so it would be a separate, uh, account, a separate, uh, fund, and it could be managed together, but two, two different amounts, again, for twenty-five thousand dollars, and what he'd like to do is he'd like to leave the investment, it's in a stock investment fund right now, he'd like to leave it in that fund, invest, donate the entire fund, and let the town use the interest on an annual basis, uh, to do upkeep and other improvements, signs, things, uh, and he's got some language spelled out in the, in the proposed agreement. So, it's, um, in a way, it's pretty simple, uh, again, I've met with Mr. George, uh, and he's been very kind and, um, and considerate in that, um, in that donation, so, uh, again, uh, we're extremely grateful for what he's trying to do and put together, and we'd like to accept it, um, what you have before you tonight is the agreement, and what I would ask the council, you can do one of, one of two things if you're interested in accepting it, we actually need a vote to accept the donation, but I'd like to, uh, give us a little bit of room, uh, with Mr. Spence, uh, he's looked at the agreement, we've got a few things you might wanna tweak a little bit, really, the, the goal is, is to leave the, uh, the, the money in the present investment fund. If you recall, we had some issues with the prior fund, with the interest and the bank investment, because we have certain rules that local governments have to abide by with regard to how we can invest our cash funds, and we've, uh, Greg has spoken with the LGC and got actually a good response, and they basically have said that if you leave it in the investment fund that it is in, and that's the wish of the donee, that they can, uh, basically, you can leave it there if it's at a higher interest rate, so we'd have to add that language to the agreement and approve that. I think Mr. Spence could add that language for us, and we can make it pretty clear, and, uh, and again, Mr. George, that's what he, that, those are his wishes, and that's what he would like to do with regard to that, and, but he also understands that if that fund changes or the town has to change its mind and make it a more traditional, um, cash, uh, donation, that we can then convert it, but then we'd be limited and have to go into the more regulated investments, like a straight bank account kinda thing. The downside there is, of course, at the interest rate, especially in today's market, the interest rates are very, very low. So, right now, we'd like to protect it, the investment portfolio that it's in presently, we would receive more interest, which basically gives the town and the Appearance Committee more funds to spend on an annual basis, uh, toward those improvements. So, again, we've gotten the okay from the LGC, um, they would wanna review the final, final agreement, but they've been, uh, very willing to, uh, to work with us in that regard, but the trick really is just to leave it in that, uh, in that existing account, the nature of that account, and to accept it as is. Greg, is that, is that pretty close?
Well said, the only thing I would add to that, Paul, is that the, the investment is being proposed to come to us in the form of preferred stock, I believe, uh, overall. In those investments, the principal is not guaranteed, so where the value, when it comes to us, could be approximately twenty-five thousand dollars, the value of it going forward could be greater than or much less than its original investment, and, um, we wouldn't have any
I move we accept it, uh, on the condition that y'all tweak the agreement as needed in the best interest of the town of Smithfield and the wishes of Mr. George.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on this? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And Mayor, yeah, I wanna thank Mr. George, he is in the audience tonight, he's very shy, he doesn't like to be noticed, but, um, I can't help but, uh, point him out, and, and we just wanna thank him again, he's been a great, um, a great ally for our beautification efforts and our, our, our work in town, cause he does the hard part, he helps us with hard cold cash, and, uh, that's a nice thing to have for us.
Well, it's, it's unusual to have a man in here who's giving the town money voluntarily, cause he loves Smithfield, and I appreciate it.
And, and he plants a lot of stuff around town. Thank you, Mr. George. Alright, uh, let's go to business item number two, Financial Director Greg Siler, tell us about it.
Okay, uh, council mayor, uh, once again, the town has the opportunity to save interest dollars by refinancing its, um, revenue fund, um, bond, um, we have approached the current lender, Southern Bank, and they have agreed to reduce the rate from three and a quarter down to two point eight nine. The only thing I would add that's not in the write-up is that, um, closing costs on this would be approximately two thousand dollars, and, uh, I got a revised payment schedule today in, um, FY sixteen, when the payment does drop, it would be some five hundred dollars lower than was indicated, which means that there would be an additional six thousand dollars in savings in addition to what the write-up has described. Any questions?
Mr. Siler, I have a question for this, about this proposal, um, the three point six eight million that, um, is mentioned here, what is that debt from, is that part of the DEP or the investment in the plant, or is that from an improvement in the system in the past, in the bond?
Paul might be better able to answer how the funds were originally used some seven years ago, I'm not
This was, this was for the substation, basically, yeah, built back in, I guess, oh-six, back in Pete's day back there, um, oh, oh-six, oh-seven. And it was to finance, uh, the cost of that substation.
Thank you, Paul.
Alright.
I did have one question, and I'm sorry, I meant to kinda call you on this, but can you explain a little bit more of the, the statement, regarding, in order to avoid paying additional accrued interest, approximately seventy-nine thousand dollars at closing, which was not budgeted, the next scheduled payment on August the fifteenth will remain current amortized payment of three hundred and fifty thousand. Can you just, I, I didn't get that from the write-up, so can you run?
Sure, I'll, I'll try.
And especially the part about not budgeted.
Okay, uh, when we prepare our budget, we prepare it based on the amortization schedule given to us by the bank. So, we budgeted for that, we have made the payment in this year.
Okay.
Anytime you refinance a loan of this type, you generally have to pay any accrued interest since your last payment.
Right.
It kinda starts you anew. That interest today that's accrued since our last payment would be some seventy-nine thousand dollars. That was not something that
It's a new cost, it's not like it just wasn't budgeted, it's a new cost just with the refinancing.
Okay.
Otherwise, it would just, we would just keep paying the, uh, old amount.
So, to get around that, and for the bank to meet their requirements with their audits on refinancing, you stick to the old scheduled payment one additional year, and then the new payment kicks in. Although, the interest accruing will accrue at the lower rate effective when this goes into place.
Effective at closing.
Did I make it worse?
No, I, I think I understand, I just, I was just unclear from the, from the No, I think I understand, I just, I was just unclear from the, from the write, and like I said, the non-budgeted part's what really concerned me, and just trying to understand that.
It accelerates that interest payment into this year when it ordinarily wouldn't be.
Right.
Correct.
All right, any other questions for Greg? Now, I'm looking for a motion to approve.
Make a motion, we approve the request.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Greg, if you could stay right up there and talk about merchant services, merchant accounts.
This particular agenda item is just to give you an update. With our merchant services account, it's one of the things that I made changes to shortly after my employment with the town. The town takes debit credit cards mostly for utility payments. We were paying enormous bank fees for, for accepting debit and credit cards. And so, immediately, I started to shop to see if there was a better deal out there. Ultimately, we ended up moving our merchant account from First Citizens Bank to PNC. First Citizens was the only bank that could absolutely, if you will, estimate what our savings would be. Others' banks had to estimate what the savings would be, because they didn't have the detail that First Citizens had. There are some 300-plus types of credit debit cards, if you can believe that, and they all are priced differently. And so, the best other banks could do would estimate what our savings would be. And so, I thought it would be good to go back later, some ten months later, and compare our actual savings to what we were told or promised by the new bank compared to our former carrier, First Citizens Bank. And it passed the test. Looking at the picture some ten months down the road, we have already exceeded the savings that First Citizens Bank told us we would have. And those savings are going to only increase going forward, as now we have online banking, and there will be no charges associated with taking those forms of payments online or by telephone, because customers are paying it through their convenience fee. So, what started out to be some 70-plus thousand dollar a year in charges has declined by about $30,000 a year, and we should see that farther decline in the days going forward. Just another money-saving opportunity that the town took advantage of. Just wanted to give you a report on it.
You're just bringing us good news.
Good news. We're always talking about spending money, so-
I'm just curious, if you screwed up and made a big mistake, and it cost the town a lot of money, would you have come in and told us about that also?
I'd have to.
Better me tell you before you found out on your own.
Greg, I've got a question. Why is it, if I take a Visa card and pay online, and I have to pay the service charges, I pay it online, but when I bring that same card inside this building and pay the bill...
There is no fee?
There is no fee.
Your question is why?
And it's the same card.
Okay. The rules that we are governed by are the MasterCard and Visa rules, and those rules say, they make an exception for government entities. It says, if you provide a true convenience for your customer, you are permitted to charge a convenience fee. Private industry still does not have that option, although you will see some charging it. It's not written in the contract. And so, a true convenience is calling over the phone or being able to go online. In a face-to-face transaction, there is no convenience, we cannot charge that fee. It's just a rule of the, part of the contract of the MasterCard/Visa Corporation.
And if you switch to PNC, what versus do you want to save us?
They told us before. They, they told us what the savings would be as we were considering switching.
They told you it'd be cheaper in PNC.
Say again?
Versus told you it'd be cheaper in PNC.
First Citizens didn't know what PNC had told us. They simply told us what they thought they could save us going forward.
First Citizens estimated it was $72,000, roughly.
Yeah. PNC said they could save us more based on their rate structure, but because of the 300 different types of credit cards, the best they could do was estimate their savings.
Greg, is that it?
That's it.
Greg, I've got a question. So when would any savings be reflected?
Month to month. We get, we save a part of that $30,000 monthly.
Greg, going back to that question, when you swipe my card here through that machine, is there a transaction fee?
There is.
Who pays it?
The town absorbs it.
Okay.
And the town was absorbing all of it prior to us putting online banking in place.
So that's an option, right? Is that an option, the town doesn't have to absorb that fee, correct?
No, well, only, only in convenience banking. Only if it's a true convenience to the customer do we then have an option. And it's not just the town. Any place you go and you pull out what's your Visa, your credit card, wherever you transact business, the bank wants a piece of that transaction. That retailer, that vendor, has to pay the bank a portion of that purchase price. It's common practice today.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Greg. All right, this time, we have the council members' comments. Any council member, Wilson, say anything?
Mayor, I'd like to say one thing on behalf of our police department. I know we recently received accreditation for Calea, and I'd like to say thank you for that, and I know there's a lot of hard work and dedication there to that service, and I just want to congratulate them on their dedication to the profession.
All right, we'll go on to Paul Saberson and the managers' reports.
Thank you, Mayor. You've got my written monthly report, Mayor, and just a few highlights. As you know, we've, the council approved a cost of service and a rate study with Electricities, and we're meeting with them later this week, basically to get started. I spoke to them shortly after the meeting, when it was approved last week, so we're off and running on that. And again, it will be a, we're going to try to get a better schedule, but they've estimated a five- to six-month turnaround in getting those numbers back, and I'm having a study completed. So we are off and running on that. On the approval for the renovations to the finance department, I wanted to also indicate that we think we've got them actually under the price, we had about $50,000 plus another $9,000 for the carpet and the windows. We think we've got that original $50,000 down to closer to $40,000, $42,000, again, before any contingency, so we've already saved money before we even started that project, which I think will be a big help for us. So again, we're going to try to push that forward and get that through before the end of this fiscal year. Again, I want to echo the comments about the police department. They did receive, and just so the public knows, they did receive their Calea accreditation. That's a two- to three-year process, and basically what that is, is that's a accreditation that your policies are in order, your day-to-day operations are properly handled, your personnel, properly staffed, basically you're doing all the things right that you should do. And I want to make sure that I fully appreciate that this is not just a kind of fill-out-of-form and get a certificate back in the mail. This is a serious, intense process that the police department has gone through for the last couple of years. And again, it's not just so you can hang a plaque on the wall at the end of the day, it truly is operational improvement. The police department was in good shape when it started, now it's in even better shape. I know Chief Scott worked very hard and his staff, and they are to be congratulated. They actually get some very, very large, from what I understand, certificates that are framed coming in a few weeks. We'll do a more formal presentation at that time, but it is quite an honor. There's only, I believe, chief, 12 or 13 agencies in the state?
Thirteen agencies, our size.
Thirteen agencies, our size, that's right, our size, that have received the certification in the state of North Carolina. It is an honor, and again, it's something that you live with every day, it changes the way you operate in some, in some facets, but also it gives you a body of rules and policies to follow that are of the highest caliber, recognized nationally. The chief and his staff went out to Reno a few weeks ago for the actual interview, did a great job, and from what I can tell from the comments at that, they were one of the only agencies that actually went through what they call the highest level of application and got approved at that, that time, as opposed to going to a lower tier and then go to the higher level the next year. They were a first time, and they received the highest rating, or the highest level of certification you could at that first time, which again, is another credit to our department. They've done a great job with that, so again, I want to commend them for their work there. Also, another award or awards that have come through recently, Mr. Carrigan and his entire department and the public information staff, they received two awards at the public information conference about three weeks ago, three weeks ago now, I believe. They received two awards, one was for our newsletter, they received, and this is statewide award, they received a second-place award for the quality of the newsletter, and some of the comments were basically, it's not just a fill-in-the-blank, send it out, it was more personal and more content-oriented, in the sense of, they're sending a message out every two weeks, and that is about an every-two-week newsletter that we send ours out. And some don't quite do that, some are just kind of fill-in-the-blank, but they recognize that work and that ethic of trying to provide original content. So Mr. Carrigan should be congratulated for that, because he does most of that work and gets some help from the department heads, and it is, it is a team effort, and Tim, of course, puts it together and gets it out to our citizens, and we've got a pretty good following with that. So it is one of those kind of silent, but good source of information for things going on in Smithfield. The other award, which actually was a first-place award, was a joint program that the town did with the high school, Triple S, and one of their classes, basically with the department heads and staff, they worked with some higher-level, mostly seniors, I believe it was, students at Triple S, and basically learning more about what we do at the town and working with those students, and so they understand better what we do. It was a great program, Triple S should be commended for its effort in that, and also the public information staff and what they did in putting that together. I know it was a lot of work with the, with the department heads there, so we appreciate their efforts there. And there are two very nice trophies sitting in the, in the main office over there, if you haven't seen them, please stop by and take a look. Mayor, finally, I'd like to comment, I think most of y'all saw the announcement that our longtime fire chief, Mr. Patrick Harris, has announced his retirement effective July 1 of this year. Chief Harris will be congratulated, and I'm sure, you know, in the coming months, we'll have a more appropriate ceremony and honor for Chief Harris and his service with the town, which is over 20 years, and another 10 years with the state, North Carolina, before he joined the town, and we'll certainly miss him when he does depart, and we've got a few, a few months to get things ready before he leaves, and I know he's agreed graciously to help us out during this transition in the next couple of months, and also thereafter, you know, to make sure it's a smooth transition. So we'll certainly miss his services and certainly miss all he's brought to Smithfield for many years, but we'll have a little bit more to say, I think, in the, in the coming months, so thank you, Patrick. Mayor, that's all I have.
All right, that's it. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.